There's the Magic Tone, and welcome to the Town of Garner Work Session Meeting on April the 30th. This is the public meeting. We just came from a closed session. This may be the first one that we had a closed session, and then the public meeting, and then going to another closed session. So thank all of you for your patience here this evening. We have a lot of good stuff to cover. And we're going to start by officially convening the meeting by calling the roll, if you would.
Mayor Gupta.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Vance.
Here.
Councilmember Behringer.
Here.
Councilmember Dillon.
Here.
Councilmember Matthews.
Here.
Member Singleton.
Here.
Thank you. And usually, the first order of business is to adoption of the agenda. But we already know that we have a key person who is missing, and we're going to postpone. So what we need here is a motion from one of the council members to adopt the agenda, with the exception of item number one under D, Discussion Points, which will be postponed. Is there a motion to that effect?
So moved.
So moved by Mr. Vance, and seconded by... Ms. Behringer, thank you. I'm looking the wrong way here. Seconded. So all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by nay. Hearing none, it passes unanimously. So we have adopted the agenda. And with that being said, there are no presentations. We'll move right to the discussion and reports. And we'll start with the Physical Year 25 to 29 Capital Improvement Plan. And the presenter will be Ms. Sarah Warren, Budget Director. And David Beck, Finance Director, will be participating in this as well. So the floor is yours.
Great. So we are here to present an update on our debt and capital, and talk to you, give you a brief overview on what our FY 25-29 CIP looks like. David's going to start us off with the debt portion, and looking at our borrowing schedule and a model update. And then we'll go into the specifics of the proposed capital improvement program. We'll look at the new projects, project changes, and then we'll give you an update on what future projects we have.
Good evening. Just going to do a quick refresh on our debt plan, and what our debt model looks like currently, based on what we have in the pipeline. The general obligation bonds are scheduled to be sold in three installments. We did the first sale last year, and have the next one coming up in the next fiscal year, which is the largest of the three, at right at 30.2 million. And then we'll finalize the sale of the bonds in FY 27 with about 17 million. And that'll be the total $69 million bond package at that point. Other debt that is planned or anticipated in the debt model includes just over 6 million for the installment financing on the Town Hall Annex Project. That project is moving along. The construction is out for bid, as well as the financing. So we will be bringing some things to you in June for action, as far as the financing goes. That proceeding is scheduled. And right now, we have it penciled in for mid-July closing on the financing. And again, we'll be bringing some more information in June regarding that. The debt model also includes 5.5 million, which was originally penciled in for the downtown parking deck. That's remained in the model. And of course, that's capacity that could be used for any purpose down the line, if needed. The new model also factors in the Revenue Savings Plan policy revisions that council discussed at the planning retreat. And we've had further discussions as the budget has progressed on what that looks like budget-wise, and impact on the debt model. And that sets aside a dedicated tax rate that funds the Revenue Savings Plan going forward. Just wanted to point out, this section of the model, which is what Davenport presented in February at the retreat, this is one section of the total, you know, full sheet model that you're used to seeing, that we tried to kind of highlight here, what was most critical, which was, you know, the new Revenue Savings Plan model and policy is designed in a way to arrive at the same result, as far as our Revenue Savings Plan balance, that the old model would have produced. So that's sort of what we solved for. We said, you know, taking the old plan, what is anticipated to generate, and kind of work backward from there to get the dedicated tax rate that's needed to arrive at that same point. So that's what we're highlighting here out in 2047. The old policy and the new policy both had us at a $148 million balance in the Revenue Savings Plan. Of course, lots can happen between now and then. Lots of assumptions are built in. But that's how we sort of designed the new policy. And, you know, it adheres to the spirit of the old policy, as far as the uses for those funds, and what we're trying to accomplish with setting aside that money. But we're confident that, you know, what we have proposed with the revised policy is going to put us in a good position with our savings, and what we can do with that in the future for debt and capital projects.
Okay, so let's move on to what our FY 25-29 Capital Improvement Program will look like. As a reminder, this is the development schedule that we worked on July and November of this year. We spent a lot of time with staff reimagining our CIP, what we wanted it to look like. If you recall, we went over a lot of those details with you at the February retreat. In October, our CIP Steering Committee kicked off to start a lot of this development work. We had our budget and CIP kickoff in December. CIP requests were due in February. Here we are at our April CIP work session. And then we're looking at May for the proposed budget next week, and then June for our adopted budget. CIP, when they started meeting in October, had a couple of goals. One was to create a comprehensive CIP inventory. This included going through all of our master plans, comp plans, as well as other studies or identified needs that staff had, or that you have talked about previously, to create really a master list of what's out there. And what we found is some of it was very old and dated, and needed to be refreshed. And there are some other items on that list that are still very relevant. So it's, we've now kind of got it in one central place to continue to look at year after year. And this really helped set us up for future borrowing, and understanding what our needs are going to be in the future. We also did a comprehensive review of our current budget to actuals for all of our capital projects. So we had some old bond funds and some new bond funds. So we wanted to reconcile the two funds to identify where we may have some project savings for projects that have come to completion. And then help us realign our bond funds, where we had received grant money, that we can then use those bonds for some other items, because we were successful in the grant. And then it also helped us set up for reserve for future needs. So creating some capacity as we get into the out-years of the current CIP gives us a little bit of flexibility for some exploratory projects that may be in the pipeline, or that may be identified by you throughout the CIP. The current, the proposed FY 25-29 CIP is approximately $85 million. The large part of that is going to our parks CIP at almost 36 million. Transportation at about 25, stormwater at 700,000. And then we have general government at 24 million. And this includes our penny for parks, our perform budget, our vehicle replacement program, IT capital, and public safety technology. So you can kind of see how everything breaks out across the whole CIP. And this, it's important to note that this includes all of our bond funds, plus what we call cash funds or pay-go funds that we're using for parks, perform, vert, and IT capital, or for our technology programs. For parks, we have one new proj, or have two new projects, I'm sorry. The Jürgen Storage and Maintenance Shed. This project was set to be part of Jürgen Park Phase Two. However, as we started going through the design work, and getting ready for construction at Jürgen, starting to think through the operating impacts, it became apparent the need for this kind of facility to store and manage a lot of the equipment that will be necessary to run and manage Jürgen. And fortunately, we've got some funds through Fee and Lou that have helped us offset the revenue for that facility. So we are, we have moved that up to align with the construction of Jürgen. And then we've also added our master plan update for parks in FY 28. This is going to align the current master plan with the new Garner Forward Plan. So we had several changes in the parks CIP. First is the South Garner Greenway. As many of you know, we did receive 2.7 million in LAP funding. So that is really helping us advance that project. We also received $500,000 in a federal earmark to help us with the work at Meadowbrook Dam. And then we also received 1.4 million from the state that will help us complete the infrastructure required for White Deer Splash Pad and Inclusive Playground. Even with all of those wonderful funding options, we still are looking at only having 3.8 million available for Meadowbrook Park. Understanding the issues with the dam, we have actually pushed Meadowbrook out to the last year in the CIP, and allocated 3.8 million dollars. And we'll continue to review that project each year in the CIP, especially as we move forward with the work at the dam, to understand what the costs are going to be, and what the needs of town, the town and council are for that project. Quick update on the penny for parks. So as many of you know, revow has really helped our value of a penny, which means we have been able to almost double what we provide the penny for parks. So last year, it was 573,000. This year, we're at just over 900,000 to help with our ongoing maintenance and repairs at our park facilities. So next year, we're looking at our continued table, bench, and grill replacements at Centennial, Creature, Greenbrier, and White Deer Park. We also are going to be doing some athletic field upgrades, which are desperately needed, as far as field lighting, scoreboards, and fencing. And then we're going to start our playground equipment replacement. So Public Works is currently undergoing a study to prioritize all of our playgrounds, to make sure that we are replacing those that are of highest need first. And so we're going to, we'll be able to begin that work with the new value of the penny for parks. We're also going to look at replacing internal signage to help with wayfinding and repave, start repaving some sidewalk and trails. And the transportation and stormwater CIP. Our new projects for transportation include a matching amount with NC DOT for the Vandora Springs Safe Route to schools. We've also added funding for a transportation plan update to better align. I think the current plan is dated in 2018, and we've seen a lot of growth since then. So we are really in need of updating what those transportation needs are around the town. And we're also looking at $300,000 for a downtown stormwater project in the stormwater CIP. Through some of the realignment of our, that we did with the CIP Steering Committee, we have identified $2 million that we are able to set aside for future street and sidewalk projects in year 29 of the CIP. Project changes include additional work at Bryan Road. This is going to finish the pavement widening all the way through that corridor. And then we, on the spot repair program, we have reduced the last year of funding in FY 27 to 142,000. That's when the availability of the current bond funds runs out. General capital, this covers our ongoing assets and maintenance on our facilities and on the infrastructure that we use day in and day out. So that includes our vehicle replacement, our public facility repair and maintenance IT, as well as body worn camera and public safety technology upgrades. So we are able to continue to fully fund those, which is really helpful. For new projects, we're looking at a security camera refresh and expansion. This is going to look at putting all of our current security cameras on one platform, and also adding cameras in facilities where they are needed, but we don't currently have one there. We're also going to, we've added a space need study. So we've talked to you about the need for space in this building, as we continue to grow our staff. So looking at what our options are for future growth and expansion of the town and the Town Hall facility. So we, these are all of the Horizon items. This is the current list that's in the 24-28 CIP. On streets and roads, we have Joan Sausage South, which is the portion of Joan Sausage that crosses the railroad. We've also got on our list the right-of-way acquisition for future projects. The new projects on here include the Wilmington Road and Ackerman Road extensions, as well as Joan Sausage West. So this is, the western portion is the part of the current Joan Sausage project that we decided to defer in order to keep the project within budget and accept the LAP funding. So understanding that that western portion of that project will need to be done at some point. Stormwater, we've added major infrastructure repairs as we are working through the current stormwater assessment. That's going to come back with a lot of projects that will be needed. And so we'll... And so we'll, at that point, be able to identify new projects and major projects for funding. On parks, this is where I think I'm most excited, is because of the penny for parks, we've been able to tick off a lot of these items that have been looming out there. So Jürgen Phase Two is still out there, but our athletic field, GPAC safety improvements, as well as our playground replacements, all of those are now being funded through our penny for parks. So that's, that's really been helpful. Out there, we still have the Avery Street Rec Center and Annex renovation, as well as the Greenbrier Park renovation. The park master plan, that is being funded in the 2529 CIP. And then we've added the boathouse relocation as a new Horizon item. So the work is currently underway for the, for the relocation study and looking at options to move that location, as well as options for what that facility will look like. But we still need to be planning for what the cost is to actually do that work. On the technology side, we've also accomplished quite a bit. We were able to fund our body worn cameras with the .49 cents in public safety technology. And then we were able to fund budget software and HR software with funding in FY 24. With police records management, so we currently have a partnership with the Wake County Sheriff's Office. They are upgrading that system currently, and so we've been able to continue that partnership and upgrade that records management system in conjunction with the Sheriff's Office. And we still have the website redesigned as a, as a future item. On general capital, we still have the Public Works Facility out there, and then we've added future Town Hall expansion and public safety facilities that we know are out there on the horizon. And with that, I'll open it up for questions.
Council members, that's you. Any questions, any comments?
I have a couple of questions. One of them wasn't addressed here, but the East Garner Road and Joan Sausage Road intersection, it's terrible and it's getting more and more and more dangerous. So what is the, where is that on the schedule for getting that replaced or worked on? There's, there was a new big pothole in it today when I went across it.
Yeah, so that's all going to be included in the current Joan Sausage project. That's currently funded.
Question about the downtown stormwater. Can you explain a little bit to me?
I'm going to kick it to John. John's got a lot of information on this one.
So as we were working through over the last couple of years with LMG and looking at alternatives south of the rec center and the park in downtown, we came to the realization that the stormwater pond that was developed as a part of the rec center development was oversized to contain some additional development in downtown, including the site that we've been planning with LMG for that development. When we started looking at parcels south though of the rec center, we realized that there was no additional capacity and, and none planned for that other pond. And so to really do any development of any substantial size in downtown that's not already accounted for in that pond, we're going to need to consider some type of regional stormwater if we want to not chop every project up with a stormwater pond or device on it. And so that's a placeholder. We'll talk a little bit more about it when we have LMG here in, in a few weeks with that. But that's where that came from, is the realization that we're out of stormwater capacity. And in our, back in our historic downtown Garner plan, we had looked at where could we add additional ponds or devices. Some rules have changed now that could allow us to theoretically do that on a little more regional level. So we could theoretically study a site that might be somewhere else and do some off-site stormwater capacity, gain some stormwater capacity for downtown. So we are, that placeholder was added so that we had something to use for that study as well as maybe some, some first steps on how to develop it. Does that provide you enough?
That works.
Okay.
Questions, comments?
Oh, I'll wait. Question, in reference to, you mentioned about, Sarah, about the Meadow Brook Park and waiting on the dam. Can you get a clarification on that, waiting on the dam? I was thinking that the report was completed and we were going to do, not to restore the dam, but to do stream restoration on that.
Yeah, so the, the work on the dam, we have to get further along in completing that project. So Meadow Brook has kind of become two projects. It's now the Meadow Brook Dam and then Meadow Brook Park. And we've, we've kind of got to make some more substantial progress in the dam part of, portion of the project before we can start looking at what the work required for the park is, mainly because of bond funding availability. So there's Meadow Brook Dam and Jürgen have eaten up quite a bit of the bond funds, which has not left as much funding as initially hoped in the Meadow Brook Park. So we still have to get some things finished or near completion to be, be able to better examine the needs at Meadow Brook Park.
A point of clarification for me, is it still a, is it still a stream restoration? The dam will no longer, the integrity of the dam, I understand, was such, at such a point where they could not, it was too expensive to, to fix. So instead of fixing it, it's going to be a stream restoration?
Yes, yes. So that I'm getting nods behind me, yes, that it's still a stream restoration project.
So when you talk on here, you mentioned parks CIP. We're not just talking about parks, we're talking about parks and park facilities CIP.
Parks, facilities, parks, parks, facilities, and greenways.
Greenways, okay. Because when it just says parks, it might be misleading to the public.
Sure. That's, yes, that is, I apologize, that is my shorthand.
Well, I understand, but I know in case the public sees it and says, well, you know, what about this and what about that? Because some of the penny for parks can do some painting to facilities and all that kind of stuff. But it says, yeah, this is parks, people think, oh my God, we're spending more money on parks, but it's parks and park facilities.
Correct.
And rec facilities, whether it be Avery Street or, or the Nature Center at South Garner, I should get, White Deer, okay.
So all those things that fall under parks, recreation, and cultural resources.
Okay, I'll just clarify that, thank you.
One question, could you elaborate a little bit on the parks about the South Garner Greenway and the 2.7 million in LAP funding? What kind of timeframe, what's the projected use of that or actual construction?
I'm going to actually let Leah answer this, our town engineer. She probably has a little bit more detail than I do.
Thank you.
Evening. So the LAP funding, you've probably heard that acronym before. We are currently using LAP funding for the Uido Groundabout, and we also receive LAP funding for the Joan Sausage Road project. So that is a funding program where we receive state and federal funding through NC DOT. It's called Locally Administered Projects Program. So we were able to get funding for the Greenway this year under their, a separate section of the program that accommodates for greenways and sidewalks and things of that nature. So that, that money will, will, will both offset some of what the town would have contributed from the, the bond funding for that project. It also will cover some of the increases that we've seen in cost already on that project. We, there's potentially some utilities to relocate, which always drives cost. We're having, we're having a pedestrian bridge constructed as part of that project. So there, there, the project budget has increased since the initial inception, as a lot of them do. So the LAP funding will definitely help to, to fill in some of that gap. That is on a yearly basis, so we received, we didn't receive the money, but we were notified that we would receive LAP funding this spring, and that money will actually come in the fall. So we will be eligible to receive that money this fall, and we'll use it for the construction of the project.
But I guess just another example of having a plan in place was very helpful to expedite the actually receiving that funding.
Right. Yeah, yeah, we were, we were fortunate that we were far enough along in design, that that wasn't something we had originally planned to submit for LAP funding, but it ended up being a good fit. And in that category of LAP, sometimes there's less competition than in the big roadway projects. So it worked out well that we were able to secure some of that for the greenways.
Thank you to you and your team for being proactive and being ahead of the curve. We didn't anticipate being able to do it as quickly, but suddenly we were near the front of the line and eligible for some of that funding. So thank you.
Just a heads up on that funding, it's wonderful, yeah. But the more hoops to jump, to go through, and so it extends the project. So whether you run a knot of give and man, I don't know if you'll be able to cut the ribbon on this one or not, because it might take that long. I'm not exaggerating.
It's true. And you add federal funding into the mix.
Yes. Lots of anxiety per project, because that's what it, to extend the project. It's nice money, but you got the federal hoops to jump through and reports and all that kind of stuff. So it does extend the time the project gets done.
But like most things, it's a double edged sword.
Yes, sir.
The government's here to help.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Observations, questions?
Just three major areas of comment. One is Meadow Brook, and we've talked about it up here before. We've got to have some type of passive use for that space. There are so many, there are probably going to be eight or 9,000 homes down there by 2029, and for it to not sit there and have some type of functionality for that space, whether it's just trails, I mean, we're maintaining it already, we have to, or it'll turn into a jungle. But we have to have some sort of plan for a shorter term passive use in the, you know, our other parks are going to overflow with people if we don't start doing that. So I, I think it might be in our interest to form a separate committee for Meadow Brook involving Parks and Rec Advisory Committee, getting community members involved. They can focus on writing grants and telling the story and maybe getting some other philanthropy involved. But we, it can't sit there for four more years and, and not have anything happen to it. I think it just has ripple effects that will affect other, other parks, and, and we need to kind of be assertive on that. And it's sitting out here like a sore thumb. I feel like I'm, I'm too young for Bloodhound Gang.
I know, I remember the Bloodhound Gang.
Probably Bloodhound Gang, because it's all the clues in here. The amount of money available for stormwater projects is, doesn't seem sufficient, even if you were to look backwards and say, how much have we spent every year to say 700,000 going forward? It probably doesn't match up. And I think we're entering, if you just look at kind of Garner Road and all the improvements that are going to have to happen there, it's not coming out of our pocket, but there's a lot of old infrastructure in the town, and it's going to start failing unfortunately at a, at a very similar window. So we need to think about that. I know there'd been talk of a utility and all this stuff, so, but revenue.
Yeah, so we have, we will be, we talked about this at the retreat, the funding to do a stormwater utility study. One of the elements of that is going to have to be setting aside money for capital, because you're right. I mean, the, the bond funds that were set aside and the referendum wasn't enough to really tackle the needs. So that is something that I'm, I am almost positive stormwater will be bringing back once we get that study underway to get some feedback on, because it will be, it will be critical to be able to collect some revenue on that utility to be able to tackle those projects. Because yes, you're right.
And there's money available for that study?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
The other is just on the transportation, and there's 400 for our transportation plan. I think we also talked a little bit about really trying to concentrate on the planning side, on are there some quick hit updates to our plan that we can get in there that we know we need without having to go through a multi-year, maybe not multi-year, but year and a half process of updating the transportation plan to say, critical area, we need to update this part of the plan. Typically, I'm not in favor of ad hoc sort of solutions, but I think they can be very obvious as what those are. And to making sure we have those documented, it, it will be helpful as growth happens around those areas. So that'd be a recommendation is six, maybe four to six quick updates to the plan that can be evaluated by the committee out there or somebody and say, these would be good things to get on the books. The 26 in the CIP, 24.6, is that mostly resurfacing? And what, what, what all's in that?
That, that is, that is all road and sidewalk projects. So the resurfacing budget is actually in the operating, because it's coming, a lot of that is paid for through Powell Bill funds. So the big project is going to be Joan Sausage. We've also got Bryan Road, Pearl Street, Main Street. We also have some money set aside for DOT betterments that are coming down the pipeline. So it's, it's true roadway and sidewalk projects.
So we don't really have monies set aside for bus route expansions and stops and BRT related?
So, so not at the moment, but that is something that the Steering Committee has identified as something that we need to do going forward. Those items are on our inventory, and we've continued to have those conversations. And so we, we, we will certainly be addressing that and bringing that back at a later date.
Thank you.
I'll just add one point on the BRT and the, and the circulator. We think there's a window of time that we don't go too far out from the circulator route study that was done before it would need to be updated, but not doing it too far ahead of the BRT coming online. So we're trying to balance that out. But we, we do recognize that, that, that study's got some, some age on it, and we want to go ahead and try to implement some of that while we can use that study.
I follow up on what Mr. Dellinger said about Meadow Brook. I agree, I don't know if we need a new committee. I sat up here, when the consultant was here, we're paying the consultant to do the parks, so let's, let's work with them. Within the last 24 months, I clearly stated, because of money, we should do the passive use there, gravel driveway, put in trails, designate trails, you're going to have to have porta potties. To do like that, whatever it takes to get used, because you're right, we got to have a passive use. As long as you maintain it, you got all that open space, people can run around and do what they want, but you need to get working, walking trails in there. And that's just something that needs to be done. We're not talking about, well, you got 3.8 million dollars. I would hope it wouldn't cost that to put in some trails and infrastructure. You'd probably say, well, Gray, how are we going to run water down that? So I mentioned porta potties. You know, we don't do that, you have to run water, I don't know, you'll have to tell me. So I agree with Mr. Dellinger, something's got to be done for passive use, because we got three or four more projects, at least on the books right now, coming in here for that area. And one of them told me when I asked him about, where's your green space? Oh, they can go over to Meadow Brook. Well, Meadow Brook may not be ready. And, you know, it may be, it may not be, but I agree. He's spot on with that, with that observation that we need to do something. Again, we've got the consultant, maybe we need to get the consultant to come here and talk with us, Damian, and, you know, Maria and say, hey, talk to us about, you know, some, what passive uses can we put down there for a minimal amount of money? But the impact be that allows people to go and use the facility. Because I know that, a lot of, that's not, this is not as simple as, as that, but what can, what can we do to open up that part sometime in the next, not till 29, 2029?
We can certainly take that back and add it to our list.
From a parks and rec perspective, we can certainly go back with Maria and her team and talk about maybe what options would be available to move that up so that there would be that accessibility, even if it's a more passive use. And then what is that longer term vision for some of the amenities we'd like to put in there? So let us, let us do some visioning on that and come back with some concepts for, for council's consideration.
Very, very good, thank you. Good, good observations, good suggestions. Any other questions from council on the topic here? Okay, well, I guess you're off the hook. Great presentation from all of you who helped on that, and great questions from councils. This is important stuff, what to do with, with the money or where to get the money, all tied together. Thank you very much.
And Mayor, if I could, just recognize our Budget Director, Sarah Warren. She's been the one who's really reimagined our CIP process and has worked with staff on creating the steering group, creating our process for looking at the projects and doing the work ahead of the actual budget so that we can make sure that timing and plans and costs are aligned with the budget process and making sure that we're looking at it not only from the capital side, but also what are there going to be the longer term maintenance and operating costs associated with these projects? And so I just wanted to recognize her, because she's put a lot of heart and soul into our CIP process, and it really does show with, with the work that's been presented to council.
Absolutely. Thanks for pointing that out. Again, ahead of time, not in the middle of the budget crunch, but related to it. but related to it. Even David has some input on this, was it going to cost in the long run? It takes many heads, and Marie figuring out what to do.
He keeps my numbers straight.
Right, there you go, there you go. Yeah, excellent work. Again, thank all of you for that. We'll be hearing a lot more about it in the coming months, I predict. Okay, thank you, thank you. And with that, we'll move along to manager reports, and we'll call on Jody for that.
Yes. Good evening, Mayor, members of council. Before you at your dais is an updated pending agenda form. After we sent the agenda out, we had a few moving parts for the agenda that I wanted to briefly highlight for you as we look at the schedule for May. Looking at our May 7 meeting, you'll see we have a pretty full meeting for the 7th, including presentation of the FY '25 recommended budget. We'll also be presenting for council's consideration and approval, the fire merger resolution. This essentially gives the directive to staff to move forward on the next step in that process, which is operational and financial analysis with our consultant to put together a plan for consideration by the town and by the fire board. Under consent agenda, the award of the design bid contract for the White Deer Splash Park, we're going to have to push that out to the second meeting in May, the 21st. So, you'll see that just pushed out until the meeting on the 21st. Under public hearings, we have several public hearings planned, the last one on the town hall annex project financing and findings resolution. We're about a month behind in sort of our bidding of that project, so that's going to be moved to our June meeting. So, just to make you aware of that. And then a new item added to old new business is ETJ report from our planning department and a resolution of adoption to move forward with that process and start the conversations with Wake County. So, as you can see, we've got a lot of great things happening on our May 7 meeting. If you look at the next page, Thursday, May 16, if you recall, we had held on our calendars a time for a special meeting on legislative zoning decisions to meet with our planning commission. Unfortunately, this was a very popular topic, and we were not able to register for it because they were full. So, the school of government with UNC is going to be looking at adding another date for the session, and so we'll make sure that when that becomes available, we coordinate council and planning commission being able to attend that training. So, that's the bad news. The good news is we do have an invitation for the 540 Phase 2 ribbon cutting for that same day, and so because we've had to cancel the training, we'll be able to attend that important ribbon cutting. Under the May 21, our regular meeting, as I mentioned before, you're going to see the splash pad design build contract on that meeting. And also, that's where you're going to see the old news business, the approval of that final resolution for the town hall project, that's also going to move to the June meeting as well. So, that just pushes that back a month as I mentioned. I wanted to highlight at the request of council as well, at the May 21 meeting, staff will make a presentation for the Creech Road transportation update. If you recall at our last meeting, our engineering department and engineering director, Leah Harrison, provided council with a memo of considerations and options for traffic improvements in the Creech Road area of town, based on council's request of better understanding the needs and opportunities in light of all the proposed development that will be there. So, she will come back with her team and do more of a presentation and a deeper dive analysis to share with council. We'll provide some more details and some cost estimates with that, provide an opportunity for council to discuss and ask questions so we have a better understanding of the traffic impacts and that part of town. So, just wanted to make you aware that that's planned for the meeting on the 21st. This also aligns with council's request to have this discussion, be able to make some recommendations or give some preferences to the planning commission before they look at this issue at their June meeting as well. So, we're trying to align those meetings so they have the benefit of council's discussion and feedback on these issues before they take the issue up at their June meeting. Looking further down in our meeting schedule for Thursday, May 23, that's our special meeting, that is our budget work session. So, we'll be meeting upstairs in the training room. We scheduled a full day for that to go over the recommended budget, which you will receive at the end of this week, and we are very excited to share with you. Part of the special meeting with the work session, we'll also have our partners from LMG, he'll be coming in and sharing with you an update on the project they're proposing as well. If you recall, we anticipated them actually being at this meeting, but due to some timing issues, that wasn't feasible, and so we've scheduled them to come as part of your meeting for the work session on May 23. And then for the work session on May 28, we've got two items listed so far, entrances for residential subdivisions. Mr. Singleton, this is a topic that you had requested that we take a look at further, as well as the parks, fee and lieu discussion, as well as we think about resources needed for parks in our, in our community. Should we look at updating any of our fee and lieu costs associated with that? And then what are some legal issues surrounding, associated with that as well? So, that's all I have for the pending agenda. There's two other items I wanted to briefly touch base with council on. So, the first is the cost of study, cost of services study. Before you at the dais is a copy of the memo from Mr. Hodges regarding our proposed timeline for this study. I just wanted to make sure council was in agreement with the timeline and was clear the stages of this work. If you recall, Matt Nuncaster was the consultant that we hired to do this work for us, and he presented to the council in the fall of 2023 on the report and the cost of services study that he had been working on. And then a lot changed in our world between approval of the paying class study with the town, as well as the revale. It became apparent that although his work was great, it was dated based on those two very significant data points. And so, what we are proposing is that we bring Matt back for the June work session and have him update the report with the new data included from the revale that was just completed, as well as the paying class study. So, that's sort of the first part of the work. The second part of the work is that we've heard very clearly from council the interest in wanting to see a development impact model designed so that council can understand the cost of development today, tomorrow, two years from now, five years from now, 20 years from now. And so, second part of this work is to work with council during the summer to talk about goals and expectations for what we want this model to do and the value that it provides so that we can provide clear information to Mr. Nuncaster to help then develop this model for us. The goal is to have a draft framework of this model to come back to council at the September work session. After the September work session, there'll be some review and opportunity for legal review, validation, testing, all those kinds of things within our October, November timeframe, with the goal of having action by council to approve this as a model and provide expectations of how the model will be used at the November work session. So, for that second piece, for the development of the, creation of the development impact model, that will be additional services provided by Mr. Nuncaster, and so there'll be additional costs associated with that. Once we get closer to the summer and after he updates the study for us, we'll be able to have a better sense of what the costs associated for that next level of work. We had that. The only other thing that I wanted to mention for council, we just have a few other announcements for under managers report. One, the historic, Wake County Historic Society event on Sunday, May 5, at 3 o'clock at the Banks House. Just wanted to remind council that it's going to be a great event. The women's club organization and structure is going to be recognized for its historic value, and so we're excited about that. The final thing is, I had mentioned to you in previous updates on the National Community Survey that there was two parts to it. The first part was a random sample that we, that the National Community Survey Organization, Polico, they were able to select based on our information and demographics that we have here in Garner. And the second part of it is to do what we call open participation survey. So, this is an opportunity where we take the exact same survey, we make it available online, it's available on the town's website, there's a link off the website, on the town's social media, and we allow anyone, whether you were part of the original sample or not, to take part in the survey so that people and residents can give us their feedback on service delivery, on their vision for the community, on issues they feel like we need to spend more attention on, and really give us a good baseline of information as we continue to make decisions on budget, on planning, on our strategic plan. So, it'll be a great resource for us. And our communications director, Rick Mercer, and his team have been great in helping us push that information outside. I want to publicly recognize Rick and thank him for doing that. So, that was a lot for this evening, but I wanted to make sure council was aware of all the great things that are going on and certainly available to answer any questions.
That was a lot of information. Thank you, a lot going on.
It's so nice to get all this changes ahead of time, what's going on, so we can adjust calendars. It's a great, great document. Thank you for your time and effort, so we know what's going on.
Yeah, but I have to acknowledge our assistant manager, John Hodges. He's been the one who's been helping us coordinate that, and that's quite the task, and putting everything together and confirming dates. So, John, thank you for that.
Excellent. A lot of good news. Thank you. And with that, we'll see if we have some attorney reports.
I'll just be doing that in closed session this evening.
Okay. And before we move to the closed session, let's see if we have some, any council members who would like to make reports or observations. Anyone down in this direction? Ms. Behringer?
Okay. Well, I would also like to thank Rick for all his hard work announcing or publicizing the improvements coming up for the water system on Garner Road. If anyone says they don't know what's coming up, then they just were not there. It's on the website, it's on the street, the signs are there. Everybody should know what's going on. So, I really appreciate the extensive announcements and work done to make sure that people are informed. Also, with the Bryan Road improvements, maybe Leah, I don't know if this goes to you and your department, but I had a call from a resident there. She said, they striped Bryan Road. She was so excited that the road had been, it's been resurfaced, but also that they'd put markings on it, which had never been there before. So, I appreciate all that work. They noticed, it makes a difference. And then lastly, I have contacted, a citizen contacted me about the sign into Heather Hills near the pool there. That sign that designates it as a neighborhood has been removed, and she really would like to see it replaced, and I told her I would ask questions.
On that particular question?
I haven't heard anybody saying anything.
Would you just like to be followed up with on that?
If you would follow up.
Find out.
She was not happy.
Okay. Thanks for bringing that up. It sounds like we have somebody who'll be diving into that.
Diving into it, I like it.
That's right. Okay, and the council member reports here?
I've got a message from a resident, 901 Francis Avenue. They said there's a line, power line or something dangling about three foot off the ground, not connected to anything. I'm not sure if it's good, bad, or ugly, if somebody could take a look at that, and they're just concerned.
We'll certainly follow up.
Thank you. That's all.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Singleton.
I want to mention also that, second one that Mr. said about Garner Road, I don't think people realize that it's going to be closed for months. Eastbound traffic from Cofield Alley all the way to New Rand Road, so.
Not the whole, yes, eastbound, it's not the whole road.
Eastbound.
Yeah.
But it's eastbound.
If people will follow the signs, they'll be okay.
Right. And, but I just don't think a lot of people are going to realize that, and it's going to hit people, and they're going to say, what's going on? Now, they got signs out there, you're right, but how many people pay attention? Sorry, how many people pay attention to speaking at signs? I think it's going to be big. I told our guys, we're going to print it out and put it in each vehicle so all of them can see it and remember that it will be eastbound only, but still, that's a lot of impact because you've either got to go down 70, or there's another way too, but go down 70 to follow the detour signs. So, also, there's a lot of, I've got complaints from people and turned in numerous yards and commercial properties because of tall grass, and I'm not afraid to do it, especially when people call me up and say, can you go look at so and so, and go look at so and so? And I will, and if it's tall, I'll either, I've got a new email address now, NOV@GarnerNC.gov, which I got to talk to staff about, and also the Garner app. I'll turn one in in a minute. I've turned one yard in already three times in two weeks because I still haven't cut it. It's bad, there's a couple of bad ones in town. And anyway, I usually wait, I wait, and I'll wait another week after I see it to think, okay, then they'll get this weekend. And when they don't, and I know the people there are able to do it, I'll turn it in. When there's someone that's a senior citizen, that's a different issue, I will wait. Anyway.
If I may add to Mr. Singleton's remarks about the work being done on Garner Road, I think a lot of people in town don't know that the pipes that are there are clay pipes. They may never have been replaced since they were laid to begin with, who knows how many decades ago. This is so very necessary.
Any other observations, comments from council?
Mr. Miller, I'd like to add that on, last week, went to Winston-Salem for the annual North Carolina League of Municipality meeting in Winston-Salem for city vision. It was a very informative time, learned a lot about what's going on within other municipalities, had a chance to network with a number of elected officials within the state, and was very informative overall, and hopefully be able to get some of the, some of the sessions that were held there, possibly even coming here, to inform our own council. So, I would say overall, it was a very good event.
It was, and I agree. I hope we can build on it and bring some of that here to spread the knowledge and spread the conversations. Okay, actually, yeah, thanks for sending us. That was good time, well spent. The rest of you were working on the budget. We were over there in a conference. It was great, it was great. Okay, that being said, we do have some business that needs to be handled in a closed session, so I would entertain a motion to move to the closed session citing the three items that we have to be discussed there.
Mayor, I move that we move in a closed session pursuant to North Carolina General Statute Sections 143.318.118.85, and for discuss real estate transaction and pursuant to North Carolina General Statute Section 143.318.118.3 to consult with the town attorney regarding litigation.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion. Is there a second?
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor, if we could add one more?
Yes, okay.
Section 143-318.118.6 to discuss personnel.
Good, I thought there were three. Okay, yeah, so there's a motion including those, a motion to move to a closed session to address those three issues, and there was a motion made by Mr. Vance, and there was a second by Ms. Behringer. Okay, so all in favor of moving to a closed session, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Hearing none is unanimous. We will move to a closed session. We'll return here with a report of any action that may have been taken. Thank you.
Signal, we now return to the regular session after our closed session and I'm going to call on our attorney to give us a report of the closed session.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So council met in closed session and received information and gave instructions to staff on pending litigation, potential acquisition of real property and then also discussed conditions of appointment of an individual employee. No official votes were taken but consensus was provided with those instructions to town staff.
Excellent. And if there are no further questions or comments from council members, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
So moved by Mr. Matthews and second by Mrs. Behringer.
Yes, get to be habitated.
Hey, it's working well. All in favor of adjournment please signify by saying aye. All opposed by nay. Hearing none, it's unanimous. Meeting adjourned. Thank you all very much. A great meeting, a lot of photo activity, a lot of exciting, exciting stuff going on.